Please take a roll call.
Present.
Amy Davis.
Present.
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 Patty Mason.
Present.
Present. Thank you. Next, are there any amendments to today's agenda as presented? And if not, and hearing none, I would entertain a motion to approve the agenda as presented, to adopt the agenda as presented?
Motion.
Have a motion to do that? Do I have a second?
Second.
And a second. Mr. Stout, would you please take a roll call vote?
Yes.
Ms. Amy Davis?
Yes.
Ms. Dorellan Gibbs?
Yes.
Mr. Lee Kirkman?
Yes.
Ms. Lauren Kith Singer?
Yes.
Ms. Patty Mason?
Yes.
Ms. Laurie Spies?
Yes. Thank you, I think the motion carries. The agenda is adopted as presented. Next, I would ask Mr. Lee Kirkman to review the safety procedures for everyone in the room today.
In the event of a fire emergency, we will split the room in half. The right side of the room will exit out of the door to my left, and the left side of the room will exit out of the door to my right. Those moving to my right will go out to the parking lot towards the bagel shop, and those moving to my left will go out to the digital sign near Glen Burnie Street and get as far away from the building as possible until the fire department arrives and clears the building.
Thank you. And at this time, I would call on Mr. Brian Gatchell to lead the invocation.
Board members, if you'll please pray with me. Heavenly Father, we want little else than to lead a life worthy of the calling to which you have called us. For these board members, it is to remain committed not just to the needs of their constituents, not just to the welfare of this school district, but to be faithful to the expectations you place upon each one of them. Therefore, with all humility and gentleness, may we approach the issues at hand. With patience, may we bear with one another in love, even with those to whom we are adamantly opposed. Instead, may we make every effort to maintain the unity of your spirit, which has brought us here in this place to work together for the common good. Remind us again that you are the same God and Father of us all. You have bestowed on each of us the same grace according to the measure of forgiveness and mercy you offer to all who believe in you. Let us then strive to speak truth in love, that our words will be lifted up in glory to you. For in you this whole body is called to be joined and knit together, to build itself up in love, as each of us participates in the work you have given us to do. In your compassionate name we pray. Amen.
Thank you, Mr. Gatchell. At this time, I would invite our guests and members of the public to stand with us for the Pledge of Allegiance, and I would call on Board Member Amy Davis to lead us in that.
Thank you. At this time, I would like to welcome our parent representative, Ms. Collins. She has a student at New Bern High School this morning. And we do not have any student representatives here today because they're on the high school home stretch and they're in testing. So we'll miss them this morning. And I would also like to recognize, if we have any elected officials in the room, I don't see any, but that doesn't mean I'm not missing someone. So we thank you all for being here this morning, for coming out in this weather to be here with us. And I also would like to recognize our Principal of the Year, Ms. Carolyn Godwin, and our Teacher of the Year, Ms. Janisha Simmons. Both of them are onsite at their schools also because we have testing going on. But we certainly don't forget them and the work that they have done this year representing our school district. So maybe if they're watching later, we wish you both could have been here today. At this time, I would... We are going to start the public input portion of our meeting. And as we begin that, I'd just like to read this reminder. As we begin the public input portion of the meeting, we want to thank you all for coming out to speak to the Board of Education today. Speakers will address the board from the speaker's podium at the front of the room and begin your remarks by stating your name and your address. Speakers are expected to be civil in their language and presentation. Public comment is not intended to require the board to answer any impromptu questions, however, the board, in accordance with policy, will include a discussion of public input on the agenda, at which time the board may discuss issues raised in the public comment portion of the meeting. The Board of Education is here to listen to those who have signed up, and our speakers will be called upon one at a time and will have up to five minutes for speaking. If you're still speaking when the alarm sounds, please take your seat. The decorum for our public meeting is to be polite and civil and respectful, and I ask that your comments to the board be focused, polite, and do not include any personal attacks or name-calling, and to be directed to the board. Please refrain from applause and other outbursts, and we really thank you all for your cooperation, and for those of you coming to speak today, and we appreciate that. And at this time, I'll turn it over to Vice Chairman Mason to call upon our members of the public today.
Ms. Ann Healy? Good morning, Board. My name is Ann Healy, 2005, Hides Corner at New Bern, North Carolina, 28562. I'm a retired physician, and I have seen the importance of education in my life, and I know the value of it. I do believe that education is one of the most important components in any person's life. I feel like educating our people, our students, allows them to solve the problems in the world and to help us all. If people are born into a lower socioeconomic status, they are not equal. Education is one of the components in their life that allows them to become equal with others, to raise them up, to achieve the American dream. When I moved here in 1997, it became apparent that this county, that the county educational systems in North Carolina are not equal, and that this county did not seem to value education as much as other counties. They don't put as much money into the system as other counties do. That being said, this Board of Education is the voice for our county. And in my opinion, it is your job to convince the county of the needs for the funds that you request. Ask for what the students need. Do not second-guess the county, the Board of County Commissioners. It seems to me that you are hesitant to ask for the funds that you need because you're wary that they'll give it, that they won't approve it. So if you don't stand up for the students and for what the needs of these students are, no one will, because this is your job. They don't listen, they're not going to hear from us. So I ask that you present a full budget, including all the needs, and if you don't ask, you won't receive it. Thank you. Thank you very much. Natricia Collins?
Good morning, my name is Natricia Collins, 133 Monterey Circle, New Bern, North Carolina. I am the parent of two students at New Bern High School, a rising senior and a rising junior. I'm also the product of Craven County Schools, proud graduate of West Craven High School, class of 97. I am the daughter of an educator who worked for Craven County Schools for over 21 years, at Bangor Elementary School, as well as JT Barber. Last but not least, I am the proud big sister of 2425 Teacher of the Year, Janisha Simmons. I'm the president of New Bern High School's PTO, which is newly formed. And to say that I'm at a school that is the largest high school in the county, budget cuts are very close and dear to us, because we are having a year for 2526 of almost 1,600 kids, which is the largest that we've had in the last three years. In order for Dr. Thomas and his colleagues to do their jobs properly and to take care of our students, we need the positions that we have, if not more. We're equipping now our students for 10 AP classes, where we started with four. Also working with a cohort with Craven Community College to prepare our students, so it's necessary for us to have the budget that we need. I also wanted to take a moment to thank you guys, because often, you're over, it's over, you know, it's not stated as much that you guys put in a lot of work. So I want to thank you guys for what you do for our county. In order to make it better, the one thing I will ask is that as Ms. Margaret Jackson comes into play, she's an awesome teacher, my children had her, H.J. McDonald, tapping into her, her wealth, her knowledge, she's in the classroom every day. And I know that for the last at least nine months, there have been times that my sister has been walked past, she has not been asked for her opinion, she is in the classroom every single day. These teachers, they need the input from you guys, and you need their knowledge as well. We need them, and we need you guys to stand up for our kids and for our students. I appreciate everything that you guys have done. As far as our PTO, the only challenge that we have had has been the opportunity to celebrate our children the way that we want to. We did three academic breakfasts this year. We had over 700 kids for each session that had As, Bs, and received their passes for extreme improvement throughout the semester. We had the challenge of having to go through school nutrition because we were not able to celebrate them the way that we wanted to, with maybe Krispy Kreme or Chick-fil-A because of the restriction with the school nutrition. So we asked, if it's possible, for a way where at least twice a year, that we're able to celebrate our kids. 700 is an extremely large amount of children to celebrate, and if there's PTO, we want to be able to celebrate them. We would love the opportunity to do it in a way that they would like and that we would like to support them with. Thank you guys for everything you do, and I hope you have a nice day.
That's it, Madam Chair.
That is it for our public input this morning. I would... I'm going to skip the break since we've just started, unless there's a member of the board that would like to take the break this morning. Okay. On that note, we will move on with our agenda for now. And I would call up Mr. Rick Stout to give the superintendent's update.
At this time, I'm going to ask Ms. Jennifer Wagner to come up, she's going to provide the update today.
Ms. Wagner?
Yes, good morning. So it's a busy time of year, as you all know, with celebrations as all of our schools are preparing for the end of the school year. We've had lots of celebrations and lots of highlights to share with you. So the last week of April, we had Farm to School Week. School Nutrition hosted this for the fifth annual year, and Havoc Elementary School was the gracious host for all of the events this year. Monday was a day where they kicked off with the school cheer competition, where H.J. McDonald was the proud winner of that event. Tuesday was the culinary competition with Chef Chris Morales from Baxter's onsite as a mentor for our students. Commissioner Jason Jones from Farm Bureau donated funds for the culinary winners, so we thank him for his support. Wednesday was a day at the farmer's market where all of our 4th graders across the district had an opportunity to visit Havoc Elementary School to learn more about farming in North Carolina from various vendors. Thursday was a luncheon for our VIP key stakeholders, with a delicious meal highlighting our local farmers and community partners were featured. Our very important guests left with a full stomach and a whole heart after hearing from Ms. Wagner and others on the importance of local foods. And Friday ended the week with a door competition. Our teachers and students showcased their creativity, and I can only imagine how difficult it was for the judges to select the winner. Our next celebration was Craven Community College Community Fabric Awards. Held on April 29th was a great day to showcase the threads that intertwine throughout our community that was, helped define who we are and strengthen us to make us the best community. Kathryn Alleygood, our principal at A.H. Bangor Elementary, was presented the Leadership in Education Award. We congratulate Ms. Alleygood, and we are so proud of her for being recognized. May 1st was National School Principals' Day, which was an opportunity for us to celebrate and honor our incredible school leaders, who make a lasting impact every single day. We thank them for their dedication, leadership, and the countless ways that they support our students, staff, and our school communities. We're so fortunate to have such passionate and caring leaders guiding our schools. We also had, on May 1st, the Retirement Banquet. The Board of Education had an opportunity to honor over 50 incredible retirees of the flame for their dedication, commitment, and unwavering service to our district. It was a beautiful evening celebrating the many servant hearts who have shaped generations of learners, from our classroom educators to bus drivers, school nutrition managers, bookkeepers, electricians, assistant principals, and even our two Assistant Lee superintendents. Together, this remarkable group represents 1,209 years of service. That's 441,587 days of impacting lives and building brighter futures. A special congratulations to Renee Harrell, our pre-K coordinator, who received the famous rocking chair for her incredible 44 and a half years of service. Last week was Teacher Appreciation Week, which was a full week of moments, from red carpet walks at Vanceboro Farm Life to chair massages at Bendy Quinn, icy treats at H.J. McDonald, crazy donuts at Havoc High, a potato bar from Outback at A.H. Bangor, and the Board of Education providing lunch for all staff. These are just a few examples of the many treats provided for our educators. We are so grateful to our parents, PTAs, our booster clubs, and business community supporters whose creativity and kindness make every gesture possible. Your partnership makes it possible to shine the light on the incredible work our teachers do all year long. And we wanted to share that with the Board of Education meals, there were 759 staff members who enjoyed their appreciation meal from you, so thank you very much. We also held the Red Carpet Gala last week. We rolled out the red carpet to honor the incredible educators, volunteers, and school leaders who make a difference every day in our schools. A few of the highlights included our teacher ambassadors from each of our 25 schools, who were celebrated for their leadership and dedication. We appreciate all they do for our students and schools. We also highlighted the Rookie Team of the Year. Congratulations to these outstanding first-year educators for their energy, passion, and excellence in the classroom. We also announced the Linda Thomas Outstanding Volunteer of the Year Award. We have so many volunteers who contribute to our schools, so it makes it extremely difficult to be able to narrow it down to just one. A special thank you to Lee Purcell at Oaks Road Academy. He is our 2024-2025 Linda Thomas Outstanding Volunteer of the Year. We also, for the first time, had our Assistant Principal of the Year. We celebrated the finalists for their dedication and their behind-the-scenes works as being great school leaders. Leah Davis from Havoc High School, Kimberly Scott from JT Barber, and Nanette Wollston-Moore, who was announced as this year's 2024-2025 Assistant Principal of the Year. And as you heard earlier, we are really proud to announce that Margaret Jackson from Grover Seafields is our 2025-2026 winner of the brand-new Toyota Camry, courtesy of Toyota of New Bern, and also coordinated with Partners in Education. We are so proud and look forward to working closely with her through the next year. And we thank all of our finalists for the work that they've done to make this school year the best it can be. Next, our Governor's Teacher Advisory Committee. On National Teacher Appreciation Day, Governor Stein signed an executive order 15 to establish the Governor's Teacher Advisory Committee. We are pleased to share that Christian Martin, our Beginning Teacher of the Year from H.J. McDonald, has been appointed to the committee. Next, our Kenan Fellows. So Goina Wade from JT Barber Elementary and Elsa Simmons have been selected, as she's from Tucker Creek Middle School, as two of the 30 Kenan Fellows statewide for the 2025-2026 cohort. As part of their fellowship, they will complete industry immersions over the summer and receive 80 hours of professional development. Ms. Wade's summer immersion will be with the Core Sound Waterfall Museum and Heritage Center, and Ms. Simmons will work closely with FRC East. Congratulations to both of them. Yesterday, we held a special celebration for our school nurses, to shine the light on our health professionals. District Lead Nurse Max shared together our school nurses assisted with 70,852 student encounters for the school year. We appreciate each of our school nurses and all that they do to keep our students and staff safe. Last Friday was the Purple Star District Award, which was held in Raleigh. So last Friday, we had an opportunity to be featured and highlighted by NCDPI, and this was an incredible achievement highlighting our unwavering commitment to supporting military-connected students and our families. With this recognition, every one of our schools has also earned the distinction of being military-friendly, a testament to our district-wide dedication. We were honored to welcome Colonel Burks, our commanding officer at United States Marine Corps, Cherry Point, and his wife Holly, alongside Military Liaison Counselor Ms. Jody Scoggins. And with North Carolina ranking fourth in the nation for the military population, and Craven County proudly serving as home to Cherry Point, we are committed to always rolling out the red carpet for every military family. Craven County Schools was one of 31 districts recognized. We look forward to continuing this commitment for our families. To us, being a Purple Star District is more than a symbol, it's a promise. And a few student highlights. Last week, West Craven High School held their induction ceremony into the National Technical Honor Society. NTHS is the premier honor society for CTE students, recognizing excellence in academics, leadership, service, and a strong commitment to career pathways. Congratulations to this group of leaders. At West Craven Middle School, we proudly honored Faran Znizari, a 7th grader at West Craven Middle School, during a special recognition ceremony hosted by Craven County School's ESOL Department and the English-speaking Union Colonial North Carolina Branch. Faran, a newcomer to the United States, has shown incredible resilience, academic excellence, and a bright spirit since joining West Craven Middle School in January. Teachers described her as kind, hardworking, optimistic, and inspiring. Her story is a powerful reminder of the strength of potential refugee students bring to our schools. And next, the Class of 2025. From senior breakfasts, spirit weeks, to walks at their elementary schools, the Class of 2025 is gearing up for graduation. Awards ceremonies are taking place to celebrate the accomplishments of this group of future leaders. Scholarship totals to date, which are still coming in, and this is self-reported for all of our schools, is over $10 million. We also have graduation ceremonies, which will start this week. Craven Early College will start tomorrow at 6:00 p.m. at Grover Seafields, and Early College East will also take place tomorrow night at 6:30 p.m. at the Havoc Tourism and Visitor Center. Next Friday, May 23rd, 2025, all of our traditional high schools will be in the football stadium, weather permitting. Hopefully, this week of rain will make sure that we have sunshine next Friday. And lastly, we celebrate our students and teachers during testing. We encourage all of our students to show everything they have learned, and we know that they will do their best. Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Wagner. At this time, I'd call on Mr. Rick Stout for...
Yes, I'd like to ask Mr. Stacy Lee to come up, do his presentation for the budget.
Thank you. Mr. Lee is going to come up with the latest version of the 2526 budget presentation.
Good morning, Board. Again, I'm going to try to concentrate on the things that have changed since last time. Pretty much, the presentations stayed the same. If you go to the next slide, and I'll tell you when to stop. Next, next slide, next, 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 right here. So what we wanted to do is to try to show a central office summary. Central office is a little hard to capture at times because the employees that are classified that work in central office span across budgets. They're not just in the local budget. So if you look at a piece of it, it may not tell the whole story, so this was our attempt to show how many people that we consider that work in central office or be classified as central office employees. It showed what, the number of positions that we had in this budget year, 2425, and then the positions that we're showing for next budget year, 2526. So, and I'll go through these and show you where the changes have been made. Obviously, superintendent stays the same. The Assistant Superintendent Chief Officers is 3 to 3, and all you do is look at the counts going across, and then the difference is the last column. Directors went from 15 to 17. Assistant directors went from 2 to 1. Coordinators went from 14 to 16. Learning system coaches went from 9 to 0. Mentors went from 5 to 0. Social workers went from 5 to 4, and clerical went from 29 to 26. So if you add all those together, it's a total of 83 in this budget year across all budgets, not just the local expense budget, there are 68 positions for a net change of 15. So I hope that brings a little bit of clarity to the central office numbers. Again, this one is one of the ones that's a little bit hard to look at in isolation and independent of funding source. If you go to the next slide, there's a change on this one. We did get good news. I had a conversation with Mr. White, the county manager, last week. It looks like fines and forfeitures are trending up. I don't know if that's a good thing or a bad thing. But anyway, for us, it's a good thing because we get more funds. So if you remember the previous slides, the 600 stayed the same. I'm now showing an increase of $250,000. Mr. White felt comfortable with that revenue projection, so we added that in. And basically, what that does, it shows the reliance on fund balance going down a little bit, and the remaining fund balance for next year increasing by the $250,000. The rest of the presentation, I'll be happy to answer any questions, but the rest of the presentation stayed as is from last time. So I guess I would just now ask if there's any questions on the budget.
Any questions or comments for Mr. Lee? Yes, Ms. Stacy?
Okay, so thank you for doing this for the, what, fifth time? I don't know, I've lost count.
I don't know.
We've lost count up here. Okay, so I think one of the things that we need to do is work on explaining really what's in our budget. And aside from the capital outlay, which I know you've got in here in a particular slide, the majority of the local current expense budget remains personnel and all the associated expenses with personnel, right? So fully loaded personnel costs. Okay. So isn't this because we have more of certain types of positions than are allotted to us by the state, correct?
There's some of that, yes, ma'am.
Some of that is happening. So if we can't pay for a position out of federal or state money, then we must pay for it out of local, right?
Right, and a great example of that is assistant principals.
Right, right, and I was going to use that one first. So, and I wanted to clarify this because I actually was going through all the various iterations of this presentation, and I found a couple different numbers, so I want to be very clear about exactly what we're allotted. And obviously, if anybody else needs to pipe up, that's fine. The state has allotted us 12 AP positions, is that right?
It's, yes, ma'am.
Okay.
It's either 12 or 13, I think it's 12, but 12 or 13, yes, ma'am. Right.
Okay, all right, okay. And then we actually have, at the moment, either 33 or 35?
35.
Okay, all right, so it's 35 minus 13, that's the number of assistant principals that are being paid for out of this local current expense budget, approximately, right?
If we can, we try to fit some of those into any state allotments or state budgets that we can pay those out of, but you're exactly correct, the bulk of the extra are paid from the local expense.
Okay. All right, so then let's move on to a couple other categories that are similar and how we have to handle them. And I think this is an important exercise to demonstrate to the public and to the board what this money is going to underwrite. So then we have this huge state category, PRC 006, of school health personnel, right? And you can use that money to pay for counselors, school nurses, and psychologists, right? So our current allotment for this year is 28, which was a reduction, last year it was 29. So as I understand it, the bulk of the state allotment, we've been using for counselors, I think, but I mean, I think it kind of changes.
It does, yes, ma'am. And you really have to look at 006 and 007. And you really have to look at 006 and 007 almost combined because we get flexibility across those two funds. 006 is the one that's identified, and I think there's been some conversation around the state funding nurses. Basically, and I think I'm correct on this, there was a bill passed that said you had to have a nurse in the district. So if you look at 006, there's twenty-eight positions. If you use the funding formula, there's twenty-seven positions allotted, plus the one nursing position for the twenty-eight. I think I'm correct on that. But we never received funding for nursing in every school.
Right.
Right.
And my understanding, there are some bills related to school nurses currently before the legislature, so that's another issue. But let's just say, okay, school health personnel allotment is twenty-eight. As I understand it today, as I'm sitting here, we have either thirty-seven or thirty-nine counselors, right? Thirty-seven?
I'm looking to Ms. Lee to help me on that number.
Thirty-seven, okay.
I have a lot of numbers memorized, but not all of them.
I know you do. I know you do. And we went through the funding for this category with you all a little bit, but the total annual cost for all thirty-seven counselors, we were told a couple weeks ago, is in excess of three million dollars. So that's salary, retirement, benefits, FICA, and as I understand it, I think what was stated was that also includes a local supplement for counselors, which I didn't really know we were doing a local supplement for counselors, but that's happening. Is that accurate?
I would need to verify that.
Okay.
It is accurate.
Because they are certified.
Yeah, they're certified teachers, so my assumption would be, yes, ma'am.
They're certified staff.
They're certified staff, they are not certified teachers.
Right.
Correct? I mean, I know there are a couple who are teachers, who happen to be teachers, but for the most part, they have a counseling degree, a master's degree is required for that position.
Ms. Stacy, I'll get with that and verify, but the assumption is, yes, ma'am.
Okay. So isn't it also true that we added a number of counselor positions during COVID? That was before my time, but that was my understanding, that additional positions were added in the twenty-twenty to twenty-twenty-two period of time.
We did add two positions, one at Grover Seafills and one at Tumble Creek after...
Okay, I was just trying to clarify other areas where we have added additional positions for various reasons, because, you know, we've got to look forward to how we're going to structure all of these various positions. Elementary counselors is fifteen positions at an annual cost over a million dollars or an average of eighty thousand dollars per employee, right? So, and that's, when we go through the numbers, each category averages over eighty thousand dollars, whether it's elementary, middle school, or high school counselors. We've got fifteen elementary, nine middle school positions for five middle schools, high school counselors, twelve positions for five high schools. Which brings me to something that I think that a lot of perhaps the board and maybe not all of the public understands. When we look at the cost of a fully loaded position, we're getting into a range where counselors are making, in some cases, more than our assistant principals, right? I mean, we're getting right into that same range. I just wanted that to be clear for the record. So I know what you've gone through, I assume the athletic trainer contract is still included in this budget proposal, correct?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. So for this particular fiscal year that we were finishing up, the contract that we had for athletic trainers covered the hourly fee for three people at our three high schools to cover the two sports that the High School Athletics Association requires that we have some emergency responder there, right?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. And that's, those two sports are football and wrestling, correct?
Correct.
Okay. And I believe the total contract amount was something like two hundred and ten thousand dollars for that.
Two twenty-three or two twenty-six and some change.
Okay. And for those who may not recall, part of the reason why we had to negotiate that contract in a really short period of time was because in the past, for a number of years, Carolina East had handled that, and in the middle, like, you know, two weeks, in the middle of the summer, two weeks before football season started, they basically said, you know, they were no longer in a position to do that for us. So it put the district in a bind because we neither had the opportunity to train our own people to handle that, nor really frankly, to find out what other available contract options there might be. So that made things very challenging. What would the option be for the benefit of the public if we did not have an athletic trainer contract? Can somebody explain what would be necessary to train folks to handle that responsibility?
I would ask Nurse Mac to come up and explain that, please.
I just want some idea as to how long that would take and what it would cost because presumably, you'd have to have some training.
Good morning. So currently, to train, they would be classified as a first responder, and to have them trained, they have to be CPR, AED certified. They also have to be trained on concussion management, and they have to take a ten-hour sports medicine course, which is, the specifics around that are directed from the North Carolina High School Athletic Association. And those currently are the requirements for a first responder related to athletics.
So isn't it true that there are some school districts where there is a particular designated person on staff who takes on that role?
It varies throughout the state. I know that when we were in a very tight position last summer, we did reach out to districts locally. I think we reached out to Onslow County, we reached out to New Hanover County. There was a representative from Carolina East, a liaison, that gave us information of other districts that are using first responders. The models varied. Some districts had, they had first responders at all of their high schools, and then they had an athletic trainer that was overseeing them to manage the competencies. That was one model. The other model was currently that they shared an athletic trainer from another district, which we were told that was not a recommended model. And then there were some models where toward the middle of the state, toward the Wake-Durham area, where they currently did have athletic trainers in their high schools.
Okay. So I just think it's important to look ahead in terms of what the options are available to the board, because obviously, it's, that's a considerable expense. And can you clarify, I mean, we do not have any of these types of designated emergency responders, nor are we required to at the middle school level, correct? Even though there's football being played there?
So they do have first responders at our middle school. They go through, their training is not, there's not the same level of rigor that there is for high school, but they do have first responders at our middle school.
Okay, so they have something, it's just not the same.
And when we do CPR and AED training in our district, and by the way, all our school nurses
Right.
provide that, they're BLS instructors, and we do that at the end of the school year and at the beginning during the optional workdays. And our priority to train are coaches, first responders, EC staff, bus drivers, and backups to the school nurse in the particular school.
Okay. All right, thank you for that clarification. All right, then just one more, a couple more things from Mr. Lee. The total athletics budget, I think, is on slide eleven?
Mm-hmm.
And it's showing an increase of thirty-eight thousand five hundred and seven dollars, which I just was wondering if you happen to know?
There would have been some small benefit increases or something that were associated with some of the coaching stipings.
Okay.
Yes, ma'am.
So, I mean, I just want to point out that basically, there are absolutely no cuts to athletics at a time when we are making substantial cuts to non-instructional support staff who run the front office of every school, right?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. Was there any consideration given to a cut to athletics, especially given that fact, and given the fact that we're continuing to fund the athletic trainers? I know that there were conversations early on in March that if we were going to make cuts in instructional support, we were going to also make some cuts to athletics, which seems, you know, like a reasonable thing to do.
Really, the only substantial athletic cut that was discussed was the athletic trainers to take that out of the budget. Yes, ma'am.
Okay. And then finally, can you speak a little bit to charter school funding? I know you've been over this, but can you speak a little bit to the formulas? Because I think there's confusion. There are formulas that we are required to apply to both state and local funding sources. And those formulas demand that we pass the money along to charters based on the students from Craven County who are attending those schools, correct?
Yes, ma'am. I mean, you basically look at ADM, the number of students that would be ours but are currently attending charters, and then you look at the county appropriation to figure out the expense side of the formula. The state side's pretty clean, the state money travels with the student when they leave. So the expense side is based on the county appropriation, and you come up with a per student annual cost and then a monthly cost. And then what we do is we get enrollment numbers from charters that we verify on a monthly basis, and then whatever that total is, we take that monthly county appropriation or local expense piece, and then that money has to flow to the charter schools. Does that help?
That does, thank you. I think that's a very helpful explanation. That's all I have.
Are there any more questions from board members, from Mr. Lee? Ms. Mason?
So the funding remains in place for all guidance counselors, twenty-three nurses, four social workers, and thirty-five assistant principals with this budget, correct? And where the enhancement teachers, we're planning on not letting them go, just move them between schools, correct?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. And I guess, and we are going to work on reducing our reliance on the fund balance throughout the year and figure out what's causing that, correct?
Yes, ma'am.
Is, I'm going to make a motion that we include those details in the minutes specifically. And if I, I'm making a motion if I can get a second.
Second.
I have a motion to include reference to those specific positions and the, trying to defer reliance on the fund balance. Is that what I heard correctly?
And to have that reflected in the minutes.
And I have a second from Ms. Gibbs. Is there any discussion or debate on that? Hearing none, I would ask Mr. Stout to please take a roll call vote.
Ms. Jennifer Dacey?
Yes.
Ms. Amy Davis?
Yes.
Ms. Darlene Gibbs?
Yes.
Mr. Lee Kirkman?
Yes.
Ms. Laura Kitzinger?
Yes.
Ms. Patty Mason?
Yes.
Ms. Lori Spees?
Yes.
It passes.
Thank you. Are there other questions for Mr. Lee regarding the twenty-five, twenty-six budget? And if not, I would entertain a motion to accept the twenty-five, twenty-six budget as presented this morning.
Motion.
I have a motion to accept the twenty-five, twenty-six budget as presented. Do I have a second?
Second.
I have a second from Ms. Davis. Is there discussion or debate on that motion? Yes, Ms. Stacy? Ms. Kitzinger? Would you like the floor? Yes.
So I feel kind of like we're beating our heads against the wall. We've been at this how many times now? But I do have something that I would like to read and say. There seems to be a severe misunderstanding of the duties and expectations of our role as board members. It is our job to direct staff as to what this budget should and should not include. It is our job to make the most difficult decisions, not to place that burden on our staff and then get to call ourselves the leaders. Here it is, May thirteenth, and we've left ourselves with only two days until the deadline to get this budget into the state. If there's been any mismanagement, it has been the last few months of all of our time and efforts to include that of our staff and members of the public who are so invested. We, as board members, should know what is expected of us and of those around us, but it is obvious that we do not. I feel it's necessary to clarify a few of my comments that seem to have been misunderstood. My comment about Dr. Miller's payout appears to have been taken to mean that I believe that is the sole reason that we are in this predicament, when in fact, what I said was that the money used to buy out her contract could have simply been used to pay for our social workers. That is simple math, and you can call it a trade-off, a sacrifice, or a bargain, but that depends who you ask. Additionally, my comments about assistant principals was grossly misunderstood as well. I add, I had asked Mr. Kirkman how he felt and what his opinion was on what cutting APs would look like, giving him a made-up scenario for reference, and yet it was later said that I wanted to cut all APs or APs at New Bern High and that they didn't need all that they needed. Yet in all meetings prior, I had stated that I wanted to keep our APs. With that, I ask that people please pay attention to what we're saying. During these conversations, many of our comments and questions are merely to gain clarity and to understand each other's views, because there has been zero communication between us outside of this boardroom. There should be a plethora of discussion amongst us regarding this budget, and there has not been, and that is a huge issue, which brings me back to my original statement, the mismanagement of our time and efforts during this budget cycle. We have had countless members of the public, to include staff members, come ask us publicly, send us emails, call us, approach us in public, urging us to please stand up for the children of our district and to ask for what our students need. I have also publicly said that we need to do the same. Our students are our ultimate purpose, and without them, the rest of us would not be here. As I said in our last meeting, during last year's budget cycle, a few of us wanted to make cuts, but we did not have the votes to do so, which is only a factor in what has left us in this situation today. Ultimately, for me, this budget is not nearly bold enough to do what we need it to do, and I do expect more from us in the future.
Are there any other discussion? Yes, Ms. Stacy?
So along those same lines, I'll just point out that this is, as Mr. Lee stated, very much the same proposal we received last week, but the outcome is somehow supposed to be different. Everyone in this room and watching should ask themselves, what has changed? Well, time has passed, and that's really all. In all of our many budget meetings this spring, everything the superintendent and the staff have presented to us here is just a proposal. It's not our budget, the board's budget, until we adopt it. It is on this board to decide what our priorities are and to ask staff to make changes to the budget that reflect our priorities. Ultimately, aside from facilities, the biggest component of our budget is our workforce, and there are only two ways to cut positions from our budget. One is through attrition, and the other is through a reduction in force. Now, in spite of the fact that we are looking at spending the majority of our fund balance to pay our expenses this next fiscal year, we have made no measurable cuts to positions beyond those at central office. This is the case despite clear direction from the board at our April seventeenth meeting to that effect. In a five-to-two vote, this board opted to keep social workers and a nurse in every school by making other cuts. Our subsequent meeting scheduled to review options from staff on April twenty-second was canceled, removing the option of a riff from the table. Notice of a reduction in force cannot occur after May first, so let's remember that for next year, when it will likely be essential, perhaps unavoidable. I am amazed that this board was waiting for staff to figure out what to fund or what to cut. That is our job, as Lauren Kitzinger pointed out, as the elected Board of Education. We have to prioritize... We have to prioritize funding based on the input from our staff and constituents, which is something I receive from folks every month at my office hours, and I'm grateful for them for continuing to make their voices heard. This board's job is to drive the budget and its priorities, but the last few weeks have been what they are, because frankly, no one is in the driver's seat, and I'm not even sure we know where the car is parked at this point. This budget does not reflect the priorities of my constituents, and therefore, I cannot support it.
Thank you. Is there any other discussion? Hearing none, I would ask Mr. Stout to take a roll call vote. The motion on the table is to accept the 2526 budget as presented, and we have a second to do that as well.
Ms. Jennifer Dacey?
No.
Ms. Amy Davis?
Yes.
Ms. Darlene Gibbs?
Yes.
Mr. Lee Kirkman?
Yes.
Ms. Laura Kitzinger?
No.
Ms. Patty Mason?
Yes.
Ms. Lori Speeze?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Thank you. I would, I acknowledge that there's still concern over the fund balance and the decisions that this board has to make and this district has to make. I would also like to share a statement that the Craven County Board of Education remains committed to sound financial stewardship and long-term fiscal responsibility. As we begin the 2526 fiscal year, the board affirms its strategic approach to budget planning and expenditure management with a continued focus on minimizing reliance on the district's fund balance. While the fund balance remains an important component of the district's financial health, its primary purpose is to serve as a safeguard for unforeseen circumstances. This includes potential emergencies such as those caused by inclement weather, unanticipated costs, or shifts in state and federal funding. The board will continue to operate to the best of its ability within a balanced budget framework, using fund balance only when absolutely necessary and in accordance with best practices for public finance. Looking ahead, the board's goal during future budget planning for the 2627 cycle is to further reduce reliance on the fund balance for daily operations. We're committed to strengthening financial sustainability and ensuring that resources are allocated efficiently to support high-quality educational opportunities for all students. We thank our community for its ongoing trust and support as we navigate the financial decisions with diligence and care. We also thank our county commission for their support. Appreciate the steadfastness of every member on this board over the last few weeks, and I would also like that public statement committed to the minutes. Thank you.
At this time, I would entertain a motion to take a brief recess for 10 minutes.
Motion.
Have a motion to do that. Do I have a second?
Second.
And a second to take a brief recess. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say no. We're going to take a 10-minute break.
Our meeting is back in session. And at this time, I would call up Ms. Betsy Gatchel to give us the 2526 AIG Plan.
Good morning, Board members. Thank you for giving me the opportunity to come and present our plan for the AIG program. That would be the academically and intellectually gifted program that we have in Craven County. So if you'll go to the next slide, please. I'm going to mention to you some certain pathways that we took in development of the plan. And I'm going to go through what the state defines as giftedness, what program standards we must respond to with our plan, how the plan revision timeline worked, the revisions and the practices that we're going to be working on during this three-year plan. And then it ends with a request for your approval. So if you go to the next slide, please. This is Article 9B. This is the legislative piece that outlines in the state of North Carolina that we actually have to identify students in academic and intellectual giftedness areas. And it talks about here what that looks like in practice in the sense that we're looking at students with outstanding abilities that are going beyond that of their peers. If you go to the next slide, this is just showing that there's more to it. That's just the top section of Article 9B. So I'm going to kind of pick some of the pieces just to let you know what else is also included. If you'll go to the next slide, please. So the first and most important part is it says that each district is tasked with designing a local plan. Every three years, this plan must be revisited, revised, and edited as needed based on the survey feedback that you get, applications that you've done, and things that you have attested to that worked, maybe needed amendment or maybe needed change. The also thing that has to be included is we have to include a review of disagreements. That's just a normal process and we actually align that to the Craven County disagreement agreements policy as well. It also outlines that funding does come from the state. They fund a maximum of 4% of our ADM. We typically, and in fact, in our April headcount, we identify about 10.36% of our student body. And then that does not count the talent development that we do as we are nurturing and providing support and growth to students in our process of identification. You'll go to the next one, please. So the state about a year ago said that we actually needed a formal state definition of giftedness. If you look at the language here, you'll see that this is actually the same language that comes from Article 9B. They just pulled it out of the legislation and adopted it as the state definition of giftedness. Okay, next slide, please. So the state has outlined six program standards. And you can see the categories of these standards listed here. We go from identification, in which there are seven practices that we must address as a district, to comprehensive programming within a total school community, which is very important because our gifted students are gifted all day, every day, not just 30 minutes once a week. Standard three is the differentiated curriculum and instruction that is in the district and how that can be used to promote rigor with our students. There are six practices there. Standard four is personnel and professional development. How do we grow within the program and how do we take the knowledge of the items in the program and extend that beyond to the regular classroom? And then standard five is our partnerships that we have with our families, the community, the partnerships that we forge with the different groups that are within the schools. And then standard six is program accountability in which where this plan lives. Next slide. So the plan revision actually started last July. We did a backwards model. We talked about the deadline that was going to happen this year in terms of the spring approval from the board and mapped out going backwards when we needed to do all of the things to get the plan ready. So we started out with prepping. There are a lot of digital folders that are involved. As you can see from the plan, it's not like reading. So there's many, many folders that are involved in terms of making sure that we have all of our communication pieces in there, drafts from prior plans so that we can do comparisons, adding feedback pieces, visibility place where people can put comments and do reviews. So we prep all of those. We meet as a team to look at our timeline and confirm it. And then in September, the state does a very good job providing support for the coordinators so that they may actually get together to discuss any changes that happen from the program standards and practices. Every three years, there is an adjustment. So some of the practices change wording, change location in terms of what standard they are aligned to. Some disappear, some are modified. So it's important to understand exactly what language they're looking for in terms of understanding what their vocabulary is that we are supposed to respond to. We also had the ability to have regional meetings with the coordinators in regions one and two. That's the northeast and the southeast to go over new program practices. We, we looked as a team at our goals so that we could use the feedback that was given to determine what our goals were going to change or modify for the next planned cycle, prepare our feedback process with the surveys. And then we also have what is called an AIG advisory group that's made up of staff that are not just AIG staff. We have coaches, admin. We have parents. We have community members. They're all invited to these meetings. And we meet virtually based on their feedback for ease of attendance. But they are also give us like a focus group point of feedback for the process as well. So in October, surveys were shared to the stakeholder groups. It was a little later because we were doing the Cognia surveys in September, so we had to space those out. And then we did elementary focus groups and the AIG specialists all had to do a self-assessment from our prior plan. So all of those pieces went into a survey trend analysis that we did in November to try to put things together. And then we also had an advisory group meeting to take their input and put that in as well. Next slide, please. That brought us to December where we started working on revisions and review based on the feedback. So there are many iterations of this plan before it comes to you. It lives through lots of discussion, reviews, not just wording, but what is the practice that we might want to amend? Did this work for us last time? There, and I'm going to highlight some of the changes so that you'll get to see what that feedback came in as a result. And it went through drafting. I was able to go in January to NCAT, the North Carolina Center for the Advancement of Teaching in Ocracoke with 24 other coordinators from our region and from region two. And we had members from the Southeast, Southeastern Alliance there to help lead us with this for a big plan writing seminar. So we did a lot of writing over four days and drafting, but it was a wonderful way to network and see how other districts do things. We're all, we're all tasked with responding to the same practices, but we also have the ability to respond as our own LEA based on the resources that we have. And then we went into the final review and edits. The draft has to go from our Google Drive with its many folders into what is called the NC C SIP. And it is, has its own, its own transfer information. And then that is actually where the plan gets submitted to the state. So it is actually in, the, the draft that you were shared with is the C SIP draft that is in there ready for approval. If we'll go to the next slide. So I present to you, once you have approved, I, we actually have another advisory group meeting to report out and do some summarizing. And they also give us feedback again for the year and the process to inform going forward. And then the submission gets put in along with a letter that you all sign, that the board chair signs saying that you all have voted to approve the plan. And that lives in the state portal and then they publish that on the state website as well. So, and it lives on our website once it's approved as well. So then, once it's been submitted, they take many months to review on their end, mostly to see, did you show evidence that you are responding to the practice and was your response clear? The feedback that they give us in December, January usually does not necessitate changes in the plan, but is a huge driving piece for plan changes going forward for the next planned cycle. That is actually one of our starting pieces was to look at the feedback from the prior plan to see what do we need to make sure we address. All right, next slide, please. So we have as an AIG program, three program goals for this particular planned cycle. The first one is to ensure access to advanced learning opportunities for gifted and potentially gifted learners to meet their learning needs. Rigor is a very key focus, not just of the district, but also of our program. And that is important for us to make sure we're equipping the classroom teachers with the tools they need to not just differentiate down for students that need extra time to catch up, but to differentiate up for the students that may already have the knowledge of what they are learning. Next slide. So under Program One, some of the highlighted components in the plan is we're always looking to refine the documents associated with our four pathways. We don't just identify one and done. We have four different pathways and we're constantly collecting information on students in the identification process. They can take up to two to three years. And so there are internal documents that we use that we're constantly making sure we refine for clarity, defining words, communication with parents. We are wanting to develop a guidance document for administration when they're having to consider advanced learning cases for acceleration, whether that's subject or grade acceleration, maintaining robust electronic records. We have moved on from living in the world of paper folders, even though we do have them to keep the records. But we also have digital records for everything that we do. So that can include just the programming records, the planning folders, the identification, the data, the referrals, the testing records, and all of the transition spreadsheets that we share from fifth to middle school and then from eighth to high school so that they understand placement for these students. We use Infinite Campus to record identification, evidence, and service delivery. And that was a big transition for us this year, moving from Power School to Infinite Campus. And there's still some data cleanup that is happening from that transition. So we just hope to continue to refine our processes. It's things that we're learning and also Infinite Campus is designing at the same time. So we're kind of working together. I've gotten to be a part of a user group for Cohort One for that in the AIG world. So that's been very helpful. And then we are strengthening the honors attestation process. That is the, the directive from the state where all of our, we have to attest as a district that all of our honors courses are being taught to the level of rigor and expectation that they're supposed to be. And that is a process we started this year and we will continue to refine that process. Next slide. So Goal One is very large, so we do a lot of things with Goal One. We want to continue to share our course planning guidance for secondary. It's very important so that we have commu, open communication with our leadership and our counseling teams and anyone that's working with scheduling, including letting parents understand about pathway options and course options for their students. Supporting the efforts and plannings of our plus courses in middle school. Those would be our advanced courses in math and reading that came out of the advanced math legislation that was designed years ago that said that we need to make sure if we can, we can provide advanced learning options for our students who are already performing at the highest level when they take their tests. So that provides them with an opportunity. If I score a level five, I have a higher option to be able to go into to meet my needs. The same thing happens in high school. If I score a higher level on my EOC, there should be a higher level class that I should be able to go into. Advocate for appropriate scheduling, the cluster and flexible grouping that can occur. We do the COGAT universal screening test. It has transitioned from this past planned cycle from fourth to a pilot that was been done in second grade for the past two years. And so based on the results of the pilot and also the benchmarking with lots of districts across the state, we're going to during this planned cycle do the initial screening in second grade in the spring. We don't start identification until the fall of third, but we can use test scores for two years. So we use that. And then as a result, not everybody's here in second grade. They might move in and forth. So we have to determine what is our testing plan for students that don't have that ability test. Next, next slide. So Program Goal Two is supporting instructional staff by providing differentiated professional development opportunities to increase the rigor in the learning environment. This is huge. Just having been a classroom teacher for many, many years myself, it's always nice to find opportunities to build your own toolbox with the students that you have in your classroom. And so to that end, if you'll go to the next slide. We're going to continue to offer our local endorsement NC certification cohorts. What that is, is a class that has been designed through Craven County schools, but also in conjunction with a course that Brunswick County uses. It's a 30-hour course that teachers participate in that also prepares them for the praxis. That is the gifted licensing test. Should they decide to go on and take that test, we reimburse them for a successful pass and also for the adding of the licensure so that we can continue to grow people that are certified in giftedness. We have just, we're just wrapping up the eighth cohort right now. We have had 50 people go through our cohorts with the local endorsement and of those 26 have gone on and tested and gotten certified. So when I started in the program, I think the only people that were AIG certified in the district were the 12 people that were affiliated with our program and that was it. So we're trying to broaden that. We also want to create, this is a new one. We have, we have, and you'll see in the plan, a 15-minute overview of AIG is kind of AIG 101 that all staff see at the beginning of the year. But we wanted to bridge between a 15 minutes and a 30 hours to develop something that is more like an hour that goes a little deeper into all of the areas, but kind of provides a little bit more structure for the things that we want to develop over this planned cycle and offer for renewal credits for teachers that participate. We are going to continue to expand communication of AIG topics into different ways that we can put them out there for teachers to see, providing resources and professional learning about front-loading and advanced learning indicators. That also partners with that honors attestation process. And then expand our PD offerings on gifted topics. We have, in the gifted world, there are some known names that are very strong in the research of gifted and they have short little courses that I can provide to teachers that choose to take them to help build their toolbox in different areas such as differentiation, creativity. It works for all students, not just gifted students. So it's good resources for them. Next slide, please. Program Goal Three is to implement and refine a variety of communication methods with stakeholders, supporting advanced learners. This is something that was a goal that we want to continue with a goal. It is important for parents to understand what's it like to have a gifted child? What does it mean that my child is gifted? How do I encourage my child to grow in anything? What does rigor look like? What does it mean when my child says that they're doing something with compacted curriculum? All of the different facets and terms and things that go with understanding what learning looks like for a gifted child. Next slide. So this means that we want to maintain information on our webpage. That's our front-facing place where parents can go and see resources. One of the things we want to do also is design a placement criteria notice for the cumulative record documentation. What we have found is that for many of our programs that are not main core educational programs, when the folders get transferred particularly from one district to another, there's not always paperwork inside that shows this child's already been identified in this district through these tests or this pathway. And we do a lot of sleuthing to call and find what, so we can meet the needs. And when we went from Power School to Power School, it would pop up, but going from Power School to Infinite Campus, it doesn't as much. So we've had to put a lot of things in place to make sure we don't lose sight of a child when they move from one to the other, district to the other or state to the other. So that is something that I have been working and talking with student services about just to making sure that we can put an additional resource in the CUME that will help inform when the child moves. And then also offer some identification, initial placement, communication in a variety of choices. Not every parent is available to come in for a conference in the middle of the day. How can we meet their needs? Can we do something virtually? Can we email? Can we talk on the phone? All of the different ways that we can help communicate with the parents in a way that meets their needs. And then just continue our communication structures that we had previously developed in the prior plan. We spent a lot of time on those and we want to continue to grow those. Next slide. We want to continue to monitor our membership in the AIG advisory group and we do provide applications for participation during transitions. So usually they serve for several years, but they do get a feedback survey at the end to say, are you happy continuing another year or would you prefer this to be the end of your term? So that we have a mixture of people who are new and a picture, and then also people who have done it prior. So have that input. We want to consider a midpoint survey in year two of the plan rather than doing our surveying in the fall of the plan rewrite year, doing it in mid, mid-year of the year two so we can see how are the things that we've put in place and get early feedback in anticipation of a plan revision. And then we also updated the procedures to resolve disagreements just with the language to make sure the actual CCS policy was in the plan in terms of the quoting of the number. So we've done that alignment as well. Next slide. Okay, so this is your part, after questions, of course. But I have to have, this is the document that I was sent by the state that just states that you have received and approved the plan for us to be able to put out there as our process to govern our AIG program for the next three years. So if you have any questions, I'm happy to entertain them.
Are there any questions for Ms. Gatchel? Ms. Stacy?
So thank you for your presentation. I know there's a lot in there. I tried to look through it and I was like, whoa, that's dense. But I do want to highlight a couple of things. So in terms of funding, I think I saw a $700,000 number in there. Is that the total state funding for AIG?
It was 740 this past year. It's dropping to 706 due to ADM adjustments and 90% of those pay for staff.
Okay. And just because I think I was on a legislative committee call with School Boards Association folks yesterday and one of the things that we really like to talk about are unfunded mandates on our district. And so I want to be very clear about the unfunded mandate that's at work here, right? Because the state is Because the state is funding what percentage?
Four.
And we actually have?
10.38.
Okay. Okay, so we have in excess of a 6% of the ADM who are not being funded for AIG purposes by the state, basically.
Basically. I mean, it's collective, but yes.
Right.
I mean, we still serve them.
Right. We got to serve them, but we're not getting the money to do so. Okay. So I just want to make that very clear for the benefit of the public. Then finally, I know in the budget that was just approved, there was zero professional development as a line item. But here, it's essentially incorporated.
Yes.
Correct?
Yes. It is, it is part of our budget, of the state budget. I have earmarked certain parts that I've already allocated. And a lot of the professional development, we design ourselves.
Right.
And we deliver ourselves.
Right. So it's essentially of no cost to the teachers, correct?
Correct.
Okay. So that's one of the things that I want to try and clarify when we have an opportunity is that it's not that no professional development is happening. It's simply that we're not actually having to pay out of pocket for it or it's being paid out of a different pot of money. Okay. So thank you. I just wanted to clarify that. Thank you for all your work on this. I know it's a lot and I think that, you know, it's important for the board to appreciate all the different types of students that we have an obligation to serve at all ends of our educational spectrum. So thank you.
Thank you.
Any other questions for Ms. Gatchel? Ms. Mason?
No.
No, I was just going to make a motion to vote.
I have a motion to, and if I'm not stating this the way the motion is intended, let me know. But do I have a motion to accept the 2528 AIG plan as just presented by Ms. Gatchel? I have a motion. Do I have a second?
Second.
I have a second. Is there any discussion from the board? Hearing none, I would ask Mr. Stout to please take a roll call vote.
Ms. Jennifer Dacey?
Yes.
Ms. Amy Davis?
Yes.
Ms. Darlene Gibbs?
Yes.
Mr. Lee Kirkman?
Yes.
Ms. Laura Kitzinger?
Yes.
Ms. Patty Mason?
Yes.
Ms. Lori Speeze?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Ms. Gatchel. Next, I would call up Michelle Lee to give us a presentation on the exceptional children nursing contracts. And this is also an item that will require approval.
Yes, ma'am. Good morning, Board. I had hoped that Ms. Gover would be able to be here today just in case there were questions that I may or may not be able to answer. But unfortunately, she was called to a school to give a one-to-one exam today. So I'm going to do the very best I can. This is contract nursing that we are required to provide for students through the recommendation of their independent education plan, their IP. So these nurses are different and separate from the nurses that Ms. Mack discusses on a regular basis. We have nine children currently that have a certain nursing service required through their IP as a result of a doctor's recommendation, a doctor's referral. Some of these include students who have seizures, trade care, low oxygen levels, and other physical impairments where they have to have a one-to-one nurse or either a registered nurse or a licensed practical nurse with them all day. So these services, we have to work with 10 vendors to be able to find enough staff to do this. We would love to have direct hires, but unfortunately, we cannot find them. So we have a plethora of vendors that we use. This vendor might be able to give us one nurse. This vendor has two. So it's, it's a, there's about 10 that we, are our go-tos to try to find the services that we need. In addition to our nursing services, we also have related services, which would be speech, language pathologist, occupational therapy, if students have that in their IP or their, or a physical therapy if they have that as well. So today, I'm bringing this contract to you and you can see it's divided up by nursing at the top for about $822,690. And then the related service budget at the bottom is 1.9 million.
Are there any questions for Ms. Lee this morning?
I have one. I have one.
See, I have a question. Oh, I'm sorry. Ms. Gibbs?
Yes, I was just wondering, I know that we had some therapy that was delivered by Zoom this past year and are we going to continue with that or will we have a one-on-one?
So we did use some speech therapy. We had to use Zoom and video. That is a approved method by North Carolina Department of Public Instruction. When we can, it's our last resort when we just absolutely cannot find a person. I think we had three schools that used, and what we do is we pay for what we call a facilitator. So we have someone that's in there with the child that's facilitating back and forth, but the actual speech, language pathologist is on video. So while that is not our, our choice, that's our last, last, you know, the last resort. But unfortunately, if we can't find someone, we have to provide the IP guidelines and that is an approved source. So we, we, we do have to use that when necessary. Hopefully, we'll be able to find plenty of people. We won't, but unfortunately, that's where we are.
And am I understanding this correctly? Is it a total of 2.9 million for all three of those boxes? Is that?
That is correct.
Okay.
And it's not to exceed because we don't know exactly because we could have a 10th child enroll and we have to have some additional nursing services. So we, it won't exceed that. And if we need to exceed it, we'll come back before the board.
And how, is that pretty level with what we're currently in this year?
Yes, ma'am. It's very expensive for nine students, but it's about normal.
Sir, are there other questions? Any other discussion or debate on this? So any questions, actually? We didn't have a motion yet to accept this. So I have a motion from Ms. Mason to accept this.
Second.
Plan as presented. A second from Ms. Stacy. Any, any discussion or debate on the motion? Hearing none, I would ask Mr. Stout to please take a roll call vote.
Ms. Jennifer Dacey?
Yes.
Ms. Amy Davis?
Yes.
Ms. Darlene Gibbs?
Yes.
Mr. Lee Kirkman?
Yes.
Ms. Laura Kitzinger?
Yes.
Ms. Patty Mason?
Yes.
Ms. Lori Speeze?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Next up, we have, we will have two Bosch Community Fund Grants to be presented. The first one will be from Ms. Tolston. And so I would ask Ms. Tolston to present this to us. Thank you. Does anyone have questions for Ms. Tolston about this grant?
Motion to accept.
I have a motion from Ms. Mason to accept the Bosch Community Fund Grant as presented by Ms. Tolston. Do I have a second?
A second.
And I have a second. Is there any discussion or debate? Hearing none, I would ask Mr. Stout to please take a roll call vote.
Ms. Jennifer Dacey?
Yes.
Ms. Amy Davis?
Yes.
Ms. Darlene Gibbs?
Yes.
Mr. Lee Kirkman?
Yes.
Ms. Laura Kitzinger?
Yes.
Ms. Patty Mason?
Yes.
And Ms. Lori Speeze?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Thank you. Next, also a Bosch Community Fund Grant. This is going to be presented by Ms. Sarah Emmerich.
Good afternoon, Board. I am also asking for somebody to apply for a grant. And the total we have this year is $28,425. Next slide. And these, what we'd like to do is continue our Innovation Learning Grants, Innovation Learning Kits, and it aligns to our digital learning competencies and also our SD standards. So we have started this a couple of years ago. Last year was our first year that we received the grant and we've created a website and done some professional development. And we have had tremendous success with that. So we'd like to continue supporting that initiative. We also talk about the engineering design process and this is something that we focus on with our professional development to, to continue to have those kids make sure that they're designing something, they're trying it out, and then they're improving it and asking those questions. So we do that with our teachers who attend the professional development. So here's just one picture. We do Saving Sam. We've done this for a couple of years now and it's a lot of fun to look at that engineering design process. And we use gummy worms and a gummy lifesaver to try to get the worm through the gummy lifesaver. And it's just a real fun time that they work together to try to figure out how to solve the problem. And then these are some of our other pictures this year that we've provided a two-day professional development. So they actually take one of our kits and throughout, we have elementary, but all grades, K through five, and then in middle and high school, and they create a lesson, a STEM challenge with the same material. So it's a really nice way to see the, the different alignments with a kindergarten standard course of study standard versus a fifth grade. And this here, some more pictures. We look at the different kits that are offered. One of our biggest things have been our B-bots. That has been one of the most successful purchases that we've had. And we also have them create lesson plans and we post them online so other folks can use that information as well. And these are just some of the quotes that we have from the teachers. We've always had really good feedback from this one-day professional development, one day for elementary and one day for secondary. And we've also opened that up to media coordinators and other support staff to participate as well. So this year, we finished out purchasing Blue, Bluebots, and I'll show you a picture in a minute. There's a six-pack of them. We have that plus a mat for every elementary school this year. And so we would like to expand that so they have a mat for every B-bot. And so that's something that we're proposing. We also have focused this year on getting Sphera Minis for our five middle schools and that's a set of 12. So we like to expand that to cover our high schools and we would like to get RVR packs for our three traditional high schools. We'd also like to continue a two-day professional development focused on elementary and secondary. We've had a lot of great success with it, like I've already said, and so we'd like to continue that. And this budget includes paying for subs for those teachers. And then continuing our process with this, we've had some feedback that they would like more lessons. So I put in, into the budget some stipends for four educators, especially getting some from the high school to help us create these lessons that are integrating these robotics in the classroom. So here's a picture of our Bluebots. They actually can be coded as well with a device. A lot of our K2 use them without a device and these are the picture of the mats. So we've gotten one mat for them. We would like to get five more so they have one mat with every Bluebot. It is very successful. There's a lot of teachers that really enjoyed using these. And then this is a picture of the RVR. There, there is a video if you wanted to watch a little bit more about it. This is a little bit of higher level coding. We can do a lot more stuff. We're also thinking about getting some microbits to go with it to code some more. And that's why we are including stipends to help our secondary write some lesson plans to go along with RVRs. So this is our budget. We have to put the subs at the max amount. So sometimes that's not always, we don't always spend all of that $190. So that buffers if we need to buy any other replacement materials for our kits. We have clay that we have to buy, paper towels. All those consumables help with that extra money as well. Yep, that's kind of, we do, we do the professional development and they go back into their school and they share what we have available across the district. And it's going to be helpful a little bit this year to have the Sphera Minis at the middle schools and then have the RVRs at the high schools so we don't have to do as much travel to deliver those kits. We also have Lego kits that we're also using as our innovative active learning kits. Any questions?
Any questions, Ms. Stacy?
Okay, thank you for that. So just a couple of questions. Can you remind me, maybe you said it, what does RVR stand for again?
It's a great question.
Robot something, I'm thinking. Robot vehicle, robot?
They always just say RVR, so.
Okay. I mean, it looks like it roves. It's roving.
Sure.
Something like that.
It just says RVRs.
Okay.
I'm sure it's answers, I can get that back to you.
I was just curious. There's always acronyms here. So, and then again, as with Ms. Gatchel's presentation, that I know you've, you've got billed in here the, the coverage for subs so that teachers can go to the PD, but the PD itself you're providing in-house.
Yeah, it'll be me. Yes, ma'am.
It'll be you, right?
Okay.
So no additional cost for the PD, but we are getting some PD, like, yeah.
Yes.
Okay. That's all I have. Thank you.
Any other questions for Ms. Emmerich this morning? If not, I would entertain a motion to approve the Bosch Community Grant.
Motion.
I have a motion to approve the Bosch Community Grant as presented by Ms. Emmerich. Do I have a second?
Second.
I have, I have a second from Ms. Stacy and Ms. Davis. So you can, is there any discussion or debate on that? Hearing none, I would ask Mr. Stout to please take a roll call vote.
Ms. Jennifer Dacey?
Yes.
Ms. Amy Davis?
Yes.
Ms. Darlene Gibbs?
Yes.
Mr. Lee Kirkman?
Yes.
Ms. Laura Kitzinger?
Yes.
Ms. Patty Mason?
Yes.
Ms. Lori Speeze?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Thank you. Thank you. Next up, we have a first read for Policy 6420, which is the policy referencing contracts with the board. And it's on the screen. I believe that the only recommended change is to reduce the delegation of authority or spending limit for the superintendent. In our current policy, it's at $90,000. There's a proposal to reduce it to $25,000.
I have a question for Ms., Mr. Stout. What is the impact of this on you?
The impact would be that anything approved, anything over $25,000 would have to come to the board for approval, no matter what it is. Currently, surrounding counties, you know, do things differently in terms of what that amount looks like. But $25,000 is a very minimal amount for a superintendent operating in a district of this size.
Ms. Kitzinger, did you have something? No? Okay.
Say is, you know, given the last few months, I think that any kind of oversight is necessary and should be welcome. But, I mean, you know, it's not anything personal. It's not anything to the position itself. I think that it's, if anything, maybe a temporary solution. And it's kind of our duty to be fiscally responsible and just kind of pull the reins in a little bit for the time being. That's all.
Ms. Stacy?
So I, I would echo that sentiment. I have thought for some time that perhaps the $90,000 number was a bit high. And I think that, given the budget situation that we're in the midst of and the fact And I think that, given the budget situation that we're in the midst of and the fact that we're in this period of extreme transition, we've got, you know, several top leaders heading out the door. I think it's a time when we need to be reviewing and aware of every contracted expense. And I'm more than happy to discuss this in closed session with council.
I would say that in reviewing the policy, I did what I usually do, and that's I went and I checked out other school districts. And so, I looked at 12 different school districts. And there was none so low as $25,000. I at first thought $25,000 seemed a little low. But in 12 school districts, there were two that had a delegation for the superintendent as low as $50,000. Most had a delegation of $90,000. And so, while I support being, support the fiscal oversight of the board, I just, I wonder if a $25,000 limit really gets the board, ends up putting the board in sort of an administrative nightmare, having to approve and manage that many contracts. On that note, I don't know how many contracts that is. So, I would ask, how many contracts do we have that are above that $25,000 or above that $25,000 limit? And what percentage are those contracts above $25,000? So... Yes, Ms. Dacey?
I would respond to that by saying I'm perfectly happy to look at how many contracts we're talking about. I would also point out that there are numerous contracts the district enters into that are multi-year contracts. So, it might be a $75,000 contract, but it's $25,000 each year. And that is, I think, the reason why we need to consider exactly what this amount needs to be carefully. And if it means that more work is required of the board in order to be fiscally responsible and ensure that the board's priorities are being carried out, then that's what it means.
Master, has there been a problem with the $90,000 mark?
I'm not aware, but I don't know. That would be maybe a question for the staff.
If it's a pleasure with the board, I would like to be able to show the board what contracts we do have, we currently have in place, no matter what the dollar figure is, and also give you analysis and a breakdown of what that number would be realistic for a superintendent to agree upon. Because certain situations come up pretty quick that sometimes pulling a board together to try to approve something, and $25,000 today in this economy is not a whole lot of money anymore, especially when the rising prices that we've had. So, but I'd be glad to be able to share with the board a breakdown of everything that we're spending on that would be involved in this situation.
I'd like to make a motion.
Yes, Ms. Dacey?
I wanted to comment in response to Mr. Stout's comments. I think that would be welcome for the board to actually see everything, for everything to be completely transparent to the board. I would also point out that, you know, I know there have been, and I could give an example. I know that, for instance, we've, you know, we've got Infinite Campus, but, you know, principals wanted to maintain Educator's Handbook, okay? I understand that there are things that we like, but we can no longer be about the things that we like. We have to be about the things that we absolutely must have. And that is where we are, and that's the reality of the situation. So, that is, that is why I brought this to the board, and I think we have to have a very transparent conversation about all of our spending.
Yes, Ms. Gibbs?
I'd like to make a motion that we table this.
Second.
I have a motion that we table the policy 6420. And I have a second from Ms. Mason. Is there any discussion on that motion?
Yes, I would like to table it in that. Mr. Stout, I would like to take you up on your offer that you identify each of the contracts and what we're buying with each of the contracts. And I understand why Ms. Dacey's bringing this to the table because a couple times we've been asked to approve a contract because the issue raises is over the $90,000. And if we had done best value instead of least cost type of RFP, we probably wouldn't have had to come back to the table and ask for an increase. So, I would also ask for a look at the contracting model for best value opposed to least cost.
Ms. Dacey, did you have?
I do. So, I would just point out that I, this is a first read of a policy. And by policy, we have first read and second read, so really don't understand the point of a motion to table. I particularly find it odd in a circumstance in which we have today adopted a budget, spending what it's spending out of fund balance, and this board is choosing to table a discussion about contract review. I don't get it. I'm really confused. So, I have to oppose this motion.
Yes, Ms. Gibbs, did you have some?
Well, it's just to table it so that we could get clarity on what he can bring us with the contracts, just so we have knowledge of what we're looking at.
Right. But again, board policy is that there is a first read at this month's meeting and a second read of a policy change the following month. So, presumably between now and next month, there would be an opportunity to put together exactly what Mr. Stout has proposed. I don't see the point of a motion to table. There is no point.
I withdraw my motion.
Yes, Ms. Gibbs, okay. Ms. Gibbs withdrawn her motion.
I still make the motion. I think policy affects a lot of things, and I think it's important to do due diligence. I get what Ms. Dacey's saying, there's a first read and a second read. But I think deliberation on policy before we even let it out of the first read is important to do.
Yes. 6420.
Second.
Is there any further discussion? We have a motion on the table to table policy 6420 in first reading so that we can gather some additional information. And we have a second. Hearing no additional discussion, I would ask Mr. Stout to please take a roll call vote.
Ms. Jennifer Dacey?
No.
Ms. Amy Davis?
Yes.
Ms. Darlene Gibbs?
Yes.
Ms. Mr. Lee Kirkman?
Yes.
Ms. Laura Kin singer?
No.
Ms. Patty Mason?
Yes.
Ms. Roy Spees?
Yes.
Motion passes.
At this time, the board will proceed with a discussion of our public input from today. I appreciate our members of the public for coming out. Always appreciate you for coming out and sharing your thoughts and your concerns with the board. Is there a member of the board, does anyone have any comments that you'd like to... Yes, Ms. Dacey?
So, I too would like to thank everybody for coming. I know one of the folks who spoke today is no longer here, but I think it's always important for the board to hear public input. I would encourage members of the board to do that as much as possible outside of this room as well. I particularly want to thank our parent for her comments today. And I think some of her comments highlight the challenge that we are facing in a way that is very stark. And that is New Bern High School is expecting an increase in enrollment next year, which is great and exciting, and lots of great things are happening, lots of AP courses are being added. Dr. Thomas has done a phenomenal job there, in my view. With that said, our funding for this budget is predicated upon this year's numbers. And so, we will have numbers in terms of enrollment at that school and really not the support that we would like to have had there. And so, that is a situation that I very much regret. And I think that it is really important for members of this board to continue to advocate, as I did last week in Raleigh with state legislators, about the really, really inappropriate way in which the state continues to fund public education. And to say that discussing these issues with some of our legislators is, it just makes my head want to explode. That's the only way I can put it. There's a complete disconnect between what they do there and what actually happens here on the ground in our schools around the state and across the state. And it is, it's very frustrating. So, I really appreciate folks coming and talking about the great things that are happening because that's the reason that I do what I do. And that's the reason that I make trips to Raleigh, and that's the reason that I have my office hours. So, I want to thank you for continuing to speak up, and I think that's the obligation of this board, is to continue doing that same thing. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other comments from other board members? Ms. Kit singer?
She's gone to, but maybe she's listening. Ms. Healy, thank you for coming to speak to us and telling us what we need to hear. And Ms. Collins, thank you for taking the time to speak to us while you're here as a parent representative, telling us your thoughts and being so active in the schools, and also for being very kind and taking the moment to tell us thank you as well. We don't hear that very often. And being understanding, that's really, I really appreciate that personally. So, thank you. And thank you for being here as a parent rep today, too.
Thank you. Is there any other comments or discussion from the board? Okay. Hearing none, we will move on to the next agenda item, which is the consent agenda. And the consent agenda this month includes the regular meeting minutes from April, the closed session minutes, the reassignment panel hearing recommendations, and policy 7100 and policy 7340. So, 7100 is recruitment and selection of personnel, 7340 is employee dress and appearance. The reason those are on the consent agenda is because they only contain grammatical corrections to the policy as it was written and some references in the footers of the policies. There's no change to the content of those two policies. And I would entertain a motion to accept the consent agenda as presented?
Motion.
Have a motion to accept the consent agenda as presented?
Second.
Have a second from Ms. Davis. Is there any discussion on the items on the consent agenda? Hearing none, I would ask Mr. Stout to please take a roll call vote.
Ms. Jennifer Dacey?
Yes.
Ms. Amy Davis?
Yes.
Ms. Darlene Gibbs?
Yes.
Mr. Lee Kirkman?
Yes.
Ms. Laura Kin singer?
Yes.
Ms. Patty Mason?
Yes.
Ms. Roy Spees?
Yes.
Motion pass.
Thank you. At this time, I would entertain a motion to enter into closed session pursuant to North Carolina General Statute 143, 318, 11A3 and A6, to consult with an attorney in order to protect the attorney-client privilege between the attorney and the public body, and to consider the qualifications, competence, performance, or condition of appointment of a public officer or employees, or prospective public officer or employees.
So...
Have a motion to enter into closed session.
Second.
And I have a second from Ms. Mason to enter into closed session. Is there any discussion?
Can we have a break first?
Yes. Ms. Kit singer is asking if we can also have a break, if we can take the motion to take a vote to go into closed session, and then we will recess for a short break. Mr. Stout, would you please take a roll call vote?
Ms. Jennifer Dacey?
Yes.
Ms. Amy Davis?
Yes.
Ms. Darlene Gibbs?
Yes.
Mr. Lee Kirkman?
Yes.
Ms. Laura Kin singer?
Yes.
Ms. Patty Mason?
Yes.
Ms. Roy Spees?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Thank you.
The Craven County Board of Education is back in open session. We convened in closed session and no action was taken. At this time, I would entertain a motion to approve the HR report 11 as presented. I have a motion and a second to present HR report 11 as presented. Is there any discussion? Hearing none. Mr. Stout, would you please take a roll call vote?
Ms. Jennifer Dacey?
Yes.
Ms. Amy Davis?
Yes.
Ms. Darlene Gibbs?
Yes.
Mr. Lee Kirkman?
Yes.
Ms. Lauren Kitzinger?
Yes.
Ms. Patty Mason? Ms. Laurie Spees? Motion passes.
Dr. Boone, I'm sorry again. Do you, do you have anything else to present? I know we have another HR report. Okay. Thank you. Do I have a motion to approve Human Resources Report 11A as presented?
So moved.
I have a motion. Do I have a second? And I have a second for Ms. Mason. Any discussion? In hearing none, I would ask Mr. Stout to please take a roll call vote.
Ms. Jennifer Dacey?
Yes.
Ms. Amy Davis?
Yes.
Ms. Darlene Gibbs?
Yes.
Mr. Lee Kirkman?
Yes.
Ms. Lauren Kitzinger?
Yes.
Ms. Patty Mason? Ms. Laurie Spees?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Thank you. Thank you, Dr. Boone.
At this time, I would like to welcome the board members for their comments and celebrations. Starting with Ms. Kitzinger, would you like to start?
Yep, so we're starting testing today. And I just want to, I know that we're right in the middle of it. Everybody's started already, but I want to wish everyone good luck. Especially to all of the third graders who are doing it for the first time. It's a really big deal. And to all of the seniors doing it for the last time. It's really sad and bittersweet. That's really it. That's all I want to say for today. Good luck.
Ms. Gibbs?
Yes, I would like to thank everyone for the invitations to various events since we met last. They are very welcome. I appreciate you reaching out to us. I was able to attend the Havelock High School Athletic Senior Banquet as a grandma. And I was just impressed that a large majority of the students that were at that banquet received honor cords for having a 3.8 or higher GPA. So that was impressive. Also, an award tonight at Havelock High School last night was very well managed and went very smoothly. Several, several scholarships from our community and different areas. So, thank you.
Stacy?
So, yeah, so I want to start by thanking all of our staff. We've had just a variety of events the last couple of weeks. And so, I know Ms. Wagner and her staff have had their hand in some of those, as well as Dr. Boone and Dr. Dawson had their hands in the retirement gala, which was great. And I just want to say thank you to all of you and all the folks who made all of those things happen. I don't think we can really ever begin to fully appreciate all the various folks who make our schools successful and make them work each and every day. And I mean that from custodians to bus drivers to teachers and everybody in between. And as I said that night, I want to thank all the folks who chose not to retire and are instead staying with us and say thank you. Please, please hang on. We need you in our school system. And if you have retired, when you can, we want you to come back. So, thank you for that. And I want to also just thank our staff who are working in a time of lots of challenge with regard to budgets and, and other things. So, thank you to all of you for what you do every day. And of course, we wish best of luck to our students as they are in their end of grade testing and hope that that will work out successfully for lots of them. So, that's all.
Ms. Mason? Okay, Ms. Davis?
So, for the first time, I actually wrote my stuff out. So, first of all, I want to start by expressing my sincere gratitude to each and every one of you for your hard work, time, effort you've put into over the past few months. I know it's been a challenging period, but please know that your dedication and perseverance are truly valued. You're doing an outstanding job and I deeply appreciate everything you do. And I'm sure a lot of you have not heard that, and I know it's sometimes just good to hear you're doing a great job. I did have the pleasure of attending the culinary competition for the first time and I was truly impressed. The students showcased incredible talent and creativity in the dishes they prepared. Each plate was not only beautifully presented, but also absolutely delicious. Pretty sure I gained like five pounds that day. I did take a moment to ask some of the students how many of them cook at home. And I was pleasantly surprised to learn that many of them regularly prepare meals for their families. So, I think I'm doing something wrong when it comes to my kids. It was very heartwarming to see such passion and skill in such young individuals. I had the opportunity to attend Branson's Field Day. And I want to give a big shout out to Ms. Davis. She did a phenomenal job organizing the event. The games were very creative. They were not our typical relay races, which made the experience even more engaging for the students. Also, I was pretty impressed with the fifth graders that stepped up to assist. They were actively involved with the younger students and helped ensure everyone had a fun and Memorial Day. I was scheduled to attend Creekside's Teacher Appreciation last week, and my goal was to get over to Grover and New Bern High School as well. But unfortunately, I had a sick child all week and had to take time from work to get her to the doctors. However, I heard that the events were wonderful. The staff did an excellent job planning and celebrating the teachers, and I want to commend them for their efforts in making educators feel truly appreciative. And last, but certainly not least, I want to wish the best of luck to all of our students across every school taking EOGs and exams this week and next. I have no doubt each of you would do great.
Thank you. Mr. Kirkman?
Just a few things I'd like to share. First of all, our folks at Child Nutrition did a tremendous job with the luncheon that was held during Farmer's City, or Farmer's School Week. And a big thanks to the folks at Havelock for hosting all that. A lot of extra work went into doing that, but the meal was incredible with what Child Nutrition did, and particularly working with the local produce and meats and things that they had available in doing that. Also, a big thanks to Ms. Wagner and Dr. Boone with the retirement celebration. They're at Carport Events, very nice events for those folks and recognizing them for their service and what they did. Also, I had an opportunity to meet with the principal and all the folks there at James W. Smith. And their student council had a fundraiser recently and raised $356 for some things they were doing. But they donated that and did a special presentation to the principal. Donated $300 of that to go toward their new playground facility, which they are actively raising money for. And also, Ms. Mason, I had an opportunity to be at West Craven yesterday, in fact, with Mr. Lee and some of the many things that they've got taking place there. And also, a big thanks to the folks at West Craven Middle School and Hope Mooney. They've started construction on their new greenhouse that's going up after it has, one has not been there for many years. And so, we're excited with what she's doing in the ag program there with things that are taking place.
Thank you. Lots of good stuff going on, lots of stuff going on. I would echo what my fellow board members said about really appreciating the effort of the staff, especially in recent weeks, maybe recent months, to help us at least get behind a budget that at least we can take some marching orders from and kind of know how we can move forward. So, thank you for your work on that. And I would, also, I had a chance to go to New Bern High School and participate in their award ceremony. So, that's always kind of an energizing thing, right? Because you see the students who are putting forth their best effort and they're getting a big reward for it. So, that was, that was a fun time. We'll get the opportunity to participate tomorrow with the Craven Early College and their commencement. So, we have a lot of good things going on in the district. There, some of our students have art that is still on exhibit at the North Carolina History Center until the end of May, I believe until May 31st. So, if you get a chance and you're downtown, maybe when you're out at the farmer's market or something, stroll over to the History Center and check out the very talented artwork of some of our students. And I would remind folks that May 28th will be the Partners in Education Annual Luncheon. If you haven't gotten your ticket for that, I know Suzanne Gifford would love to sell you a ticket for that. So, it'll be on a Wednesday at the Convention Center.